Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, 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 Hare, Hare. Hare Krishna, dear devotees, Dandadpranams to all of you. Thank you very much for joining in for our Ekadashi special session today. Today is Pashankusha Ekadashi and also today is the first day of the fourth month of Chaturmasyavrata. For those of us who are following Ekadashi to Ekadashi for the Chaturmasyavrata, today our fourth month is starting where we are fasting from Urad dal. So let's start with prayers. Om Jnana Timran Dasya, Jnana Anjanashalakaya, Chakshur Unmilitam Yena, Tasmai Shri Gurave Namaha. Shri Chaitanya Manobishram Stapitam Yena Bhutale, Swayam Rupa Kadamayam Dadatiseva Padantikam. Vandeham Shri Guru, Shri Utapatakamalam, Shri Guru Unvaishnavam. Shri Rupam Sagrajatam Sahavana, Ragunathan Vitam Tamsojibam. Saadvaitam Savadutam Parijanasaitam, Shri Krishna Chaitanya Devam. Shri Radha Krishna Padan Saghana Lalita, Shri Vishakam Vitam. Namom Vishnu Padaya, Krishna Preesthaya Bhutale, Shrimate Bhaktivedanta. Swamini Niki Namine, Namasthe Saraswate Deve Gauravani Pracharinne. Nirvisesh Shunyavadi Aschatyadevishatariine. Namoh Mahavatanyaya, Krishna Prema Pradhayate. Krishnaaya Krishna Chaitanya Namne Gauradusheenamaha. Panchatattva Atmakam Krishnam Bhakta Rupa Swarupakam Bhaktaavitarum Bhaktaakyam Namami BhaktaShaktikam. He Krishna Karuna Sindho, Dina Bandho Jagatpathe. Gopesh Gopika Kanta Radha Kanta Namusuthe. Taptakanchana Gaurangiradhé Vrindavanishwari, Vishabhanusuthe Devi. Pranamami Hari Priye. Vanchakalpatarubyascha, Prapasindu Byevacha. Adhitanampavanebyo Vaishnavebhyo Namu Namah. Jai Shri Krishna Chaitanya, Prabhu Nityananda. Shri Advaitgaladhara, Shriva Sadigora Bhaktavrinda. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare, Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, 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 Hare, Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare, Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, 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 Hare, Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare, Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, 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 Hare, Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare, Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, 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 Hare, Hare. Mukam Karoti Vachalam Pangum Langayate Girim Yatra Pathamam Vandeh. Shri Guru Dina Tharinam Paramanandam Adavam, Shri Krishna Chaitanya Ishwaram Harihi Om. Om Namoh Bhagavate Vasudevaya. Om Namoh Bhagavate Vasudevaya. Om Namoh Bhagavate Vasudevaya. Hare Krishna, dear devotees, Dandadpranams to all of you. So today is the auspicious occasion of Ekadashi, Pashankusha Ekadashi. So as per our schedule, we will first start with the Mangalachuran prayers, we've completed that. So now we'll go ahead with the Ekadashi Mahatmya. So what is the glory of the Pashankusha Ekadashi, right? This is told by Lord Shri Krishna, Yudhishthu Maharaj. Yudhishthu Maharaj asks Krishna, "Oh Madhusudan", why does he call him Madhusudan? He calls him Madhusudan because just like Krishna killed Madhu the demon. Similarly, Yudhishthu Maharaj is asking Krishna to please kill the demon of doubt in my mind. And let me know what is the glory of following this Ekadashi vritta? So let me share my screen, devotees can start reading the glory of Pashankusha Ekadashi. Okay, who wants to start? Okay, Sudha Madhaji, go ahead.
Hare Krishna Mataji, Dandadpranams.
Dandadpranams, yes.
The glories of... Yes Mataji.
Okay, yeah.
Hare Krishna, the glories of Pashankusha Ekadashi which occurs during the waxing moon in the month of September/October is described in Brahma Vaivarta Purana in the conversation between Lord Krishna and Maharaja Yudhishthira. Maharaja Yudhishthira said, "Oh Madhusudan, what is the name of the Ekadashi that occurs during the waxing moon in the month of September/October? Please be kind and explain this to me." Lord Krishna replied, "Oh best of the kings, the name of this Ekadashi is Pashankusha Ekadashi. Now please hear from me the glories of this Ekadashi which destroys all one sins." Some people also call this Ekadashi as Pa-Papankusha Ekadashi. One should specifically worship Lord Padbhanaba on the day of this Ekadashi. This Ekadashi awards a person the heavenly pleasures, liberation and the his desired results. Just by chanting the holy names of Lord Vishnu, one can attain all the piety of visiting all the holy places on the earth. If a conditioned soul in spite of indulging in various sinful activities due to illusion takes shelter and offers obeisances at the lotus feet of Lord Hari who is expert in delivering the fallen souls, then such a person does not have to go to hell. Those Vaishnavas who criticize Lord Shiva and those shywats who criticize Lord Vishnu are both undoubtedly go to hell. The result obtained by performing 1,000 horse sacrifices or by performing 100 Rajasuya sacrifices cannot be equal to the 1/16 portion of piety one obtains by following this Ekadashi. There is no piety in this world which is equal to the piety earned by observing the Ekadashi. Therefore, there is no other day as sanctified as this day of Ekadashi which is very dear to Lord Padbhanaba. Okay, as soon, thank you Mataji, Hare Krishna.
Ask, our Karpa Gavali Madhaji, go ahead, those Vaishnavas, oh king, as soon as a person...
Yes Mataji, thank you Mataji, Dandadpranams. Oh, as soon as a person feels to observe Ekadashi, the sins begin to reside in his body. This Ekadashi awards its followers the heavenly pleasures, liberation, peace from disease, conditions, beautiful women, wealth and sport to gain. Om Internals of earth, if one observes this Ekadashi and remains awake on that night, easily goes to the award of Lord Vishnu. Now Krishna continued, "Oh best of the kings, by observing the vow of this Ekadashi, one can deliver ten generations from his mother's family, ten generations from his father's family and ten generations from his wife's family. If a person observes this Ekadashi either in his childhood or youth or in his old age, he does not suffer the miseries of the material existence." One who strictly observes the Pasanggusa or Pasanggusa Ekadashi, Ekadashi, then all sinful reactions are eradicated and at the end his life he returns to the award of Lord Vishnu. If a person gives away gold, sesame seeds, land, cow, food, rain, water, amberla, ashur, and yam charity, then such a person does not have to go to the award of the Ayam Raja. Anyone who intends to stay without engaging in various activities, he is like a dead man, although he is breathing. His breathing is compared to the bellows of the blacksmith. "Oh best of the kings, a person who takes wealth and looks like they benefit and does well and late for the benefit of others, donates land and horses and perform other pious activities such as performing sacrifices if not subjected to the punishment of Ayam Raja." As a result of piety, only people live long lives, become rich, take birth in high family, high-class families and become diseaseless. The purpose is that the direct result of observing Ekadashi is to attain devotion services to Krishna and the indirect result is to attain the temporary material benefits. Thank you Mataji, Dandadpranams.
Thank you Mataji, Dandadpranams. So what is the main goal of observing Ekadashi vritta? The main goal of observing Ekadashi vritta is Krishna prema, love for the supreme personality of God, Lord Shri Krishna. Right? Janma Aishwarya, Shruti Shribhir, right? High parentage, Aishwarya getting, you know, having a lot of opulences, having a lot of wealth, skills, resources and all of these things. Janma Aishwarya, Shruti Shribhir, Shri means all the opulences, beauty etc. They are all useless if they are not employed in the service of the Lord because all of that will deteriorate or will be taken away with the passage of time. But what is the one thing that will always remain with us which is our, you know, the punja as we call it, right? Our only credit, you know, the credit that remains forever is the service we have done to the supreme personality of God and his devotees. Because that credit Krishna says, "Neha Bikramanashosthi, Pratyavayona Vidyate Swalpuma Piyasya Dharmasya, Traite Mahato Bhayat." Right? Neha Bikramanashosthi, there is no loss or diminution on this path of devotional service. And even a little bit of devotional service that is done will protect one from the most dangerous type of fear. And what is that danger? The most dangerous type of fear is to actually degrade into lower species, right? We have evolved from various Jalajana, Valakshani, Stavralakshamshati, Tramyo, Rutrasankya Gaha, Pakshitam, Dusalakshanam, Trimshalakshani, Pasabha, Chaturlakshani, Manushaha. Like that, we have evolved from being plants, then trees, then reptiles and then some animals and then insects, Red Kremio and all of that. And finally, we got this human form of life. So we don't want to waste this human form of life and try to accumulate those things which will anyway die with the passage of time or will be taken away with the passage of time. So what are we supposed to do? We are supposed to engage this human form of life and get those credits which we cannot get in any other form of life, right? In this human form of life, we will get what we cannot attain in any other species of life, right? In this human form of life, we can inquire, "Why am I suffering in this world? Why am I born in this world? How can I go back to that place where there is no Janma Mritu Jaravyadi?", right? So all of these questions can be asked only when someone is in the human form of life. So we've got that human form of life, so we should utilize that in the service of the supreme lord and attain our eternal destination which is Krishna prema. Alright, so that was the first agenda. So we've completed the study of Ekadashi Mahatmya. Now, what is the next one? One second, devotees. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare, Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Am Ram, Hare, Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare, Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, 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 Hare, Hare. So next, after having studied the glory of Ekadashi, then you now sing a beautiful bhajan. Actually, I was singing, we should sing Radhika Ashtrakam because the month of Shrimati Radharani is coming. So we will sing this most auspicious bhajan, Radhika Ashtrakam. Then I thought that we are doing our Chaturmasyavrata, we are starting from today itself, right? When we are doing Ekadashi to Ekadashi. We are, we are actually, you know, our milk fasting ended yesterday and today we are already starting our Urad dal fasting. And also, we are following, you know, although Kartik month officially starts from seventeen, but since you're observing Ekadashi. I thought, let's why not sing our first Damodar Ashtrakam, right? Because we are already, you know, waiting to, you know, to receive Shrimati Radharani, it is her month that's coming. So Radhika Ashtrakam was a good choice, but then I was not able to decide. Let's see, if there is time, at the end of it, we will sing Damodar Radhika Ashtrakam also, right? Or we will sing, let's sing Radhika Ashtrakam as per schedule and if time permits, we will sing Damodar Ashtrakam at the end of it. Right through the mercy of Shrimati Radharani, we will get Lord Shri Krishna, right? So let us sing Radhika Ashtrakam. Yeah, this is a very beautiful song. Kunkumapta Kanchanabja, right? Glorifying Shrimati Radharani, right? Whose month is just going to come in about three days. This is written by Shri Krishna Dase Kaviraj Goswami. You all know Krishna Dase Kaviraj Goswami is the author of Chaitanya Charitamritta. And very wonderfully, his expression of humility is seen in every chapter where he says, you know, Chaitanya Vyasa Vrindavandas, right? Whereas I am only trying to explain those things which have not been explained by Vrindavandas Takur or I am just trying to explain a glimpse of that, right? Everybody should go back and study Chaitanya Bhagavat Vai Vrindavandas Takur. So that is the mood of our Krishna Dase Kaviraj Goswami Maharaj who has actually sung or written this beautiful song which is called Radhika Ashtrakam. Okay, let me quickly share my screen and then we will go ahead and sing this beautiful song. And if time permits, at the end of the session, we will sing Damodar Ashtrakam, right? We will sing Radhika Ashtrakam, we will pray for the mercy of Shrimati Radharani. And then at the end of the session, we will, we will see how by the help of Radharani, Yashodamaya actually captured Krishna and tied him to the motor. Kunkumapta Kanchanabja, Garbahari Gaurabhá. Pita Nancheetabja Ganda, Virtinindi Shaurabhá. Mayya Matma Padapatma, Dasya Dashturadika. Gaurabinda, Kanti Nindi, Chitra Pata Shaatika. Krishna Mata Bringa Keli, Fulla Poooshpavatika. Krishna Nithya Sangamata, Patmakanduradika. Mayya Matma Padapatma, Dasya Dashturadika. Sau Kumadhyam, Shristapallam, Palikirtinigraha. Swabhimarsha, Ballavésa, Kamatapavadika. Mayya Matma Padapatma, Dasya Dashturadika. Leelaard, Leelayacha, Sayatoshtinadika. Mayya Matma Padapatma, Dasya Dashturadika. Dasalasya, Vitanalma, Sakkalali Pandita. Pemaramyarupavesa, Tadgunali Mandita. Nishvanavya, Topayoshid, Alitoopiadika. Mayya Matma Padapatma, Dasya Dashturadika. Nithyanavya, Rupakeli, Krishna Bhava Sampaada. Krishna Raga Bandagopa, Yavateshukampada. Krishna Rupa, Veshakeli, Lagnasatsamadika. Mayya Matma Padapatma, Dasya Dashturadika. Vedakampa, Kanta Prashru, Gaddhadadi Sanchita. Marsha Harsha Vamataadi, Bhava Bhushananchita. Krishna Metra, Toširatna, Mandanali Radika. Mayya Matma Padapatma, Dasya Dashturadika. Lapshonada, Krishna Vetr, Yoga Santakodika. Nikathainya Chapaladi, Bhava Vrindamodita. Yatnalabdha Krishna Sangha, Nirgata Giladika. Mayya Matma Padapatma, Dasya Dashturadika. Ashthatena, Yashtvanena, Nautil Krishna Vallabhá. Krishna Sangha, Nanditatma, Dasyasidubhajana. Tamkaroti Nanditali, Sancharashusájanam. Mayya Matma Padapatma, Dasya Dashturadika. Mayya Matma Padapatma, Dasya Dashturadika. Hare Krishna, okay, Sindhu Mataji, please read the translation, I'll just reduce the font size.
Hare Krishna, Dandadpranams, Madhaji. May Audubal, or?
Yes Mataji, go ahead.
Translation, first one. Her splendrous golden complexion steals the pride of a golden lotus flower anointed with a tinge of red kunkum vermi lion. Her sweet fragrance mocks the fame of the aroma of the lotus flower sprinkled with saffron powder. She is fully qualified to fulfill all the desires of the son of the king of the coward men. May Sri Radhika bestow upon me the service of her own lotus feet. Second, her amazing and colorful silken garments make the splendor of the red coral feet feel ashamed. She is garden of blossoming flowers where the maddened bumblebee named Krishna performs amorous pastimes. She worshipped the sun god daily in order to attain the continual association of her beloved Krishna. May she Radhika bestow upon me the service of her own lotus feet. Translation three, her charming youthful delicacy negates the fame of the freshly sprouted leaves. Her refreshing form is worthy of being served by the cooling moon sandalwood-based lotus flowers and camphor. When she touches the master of the gopies, she dispels the burning heat of his lusty desires. May Sri Radhika bestow upon me the service of her own lotus feet. Fourth, although the goddess of fortune, Lakshmi Devi is adorned by other youthful goddesses who are themselves glorified throughout the universe. Still, she is nowhere near Sri Radhika in the matter of beauty, praise-worthy youthfulness or other divine feminine opulences. There is no one in the material or spiritual worlds that is superior to Radhika, the expression of naturally loving pastimes. May Sri Radhika bestow upon me the service of her own lotus feet.
Hare Krishna, thank you Mataji.
Hare Krishna, thank you.
Yelena Dini Mataji, go ahead.
Hare Krishna Mataji, Dandadpranams.
Hare Krishna, Dandadpranams, Mataji.
She is very learned in many transcendental arts such as performing in the rasa dance, singing and joking. She is decorated with many divine qualities such as loving nature, exquisite beauty and wonderful garments and ornaments. Even among the... Even among the coward damsels of Raja who are praised by the entire universe, she is the best in every way. May she Radhika bestow upon me the service of her own lotus feet. She possesses the opulences of eternal, rightful beauty, eternal pastimes, eternal love for Krishna. Her ecstatic feelings of love for Krishna cause the gopies who are also in love with Krishna to tremble. She is always attached to meditating on Krishna's beautiful form, ornaments, garments and pastimes. May she Radhika bestow upon me the service of her own lotus feet. She is graced with eight ecstatic symptoms, saktvikabava such as trembling, perspiring standing upon bodily hairs, tears, faltering of the voice and so forth. She is adorned with different ecstatic emotional ornaments such as impatience, joy, crowdreness and so forth. She is decorated with beautiful jewels that give total delight to the eyes of Krishna. May she Radhika bestow upon me the service of her own lotus feet. If she is apart from Krishna for even a half a moment, she becomes stricken with various suffering, lacklessness and a multitude of other ecstatic symptoms of separation. When she regains association of Krishna after some effort, then all of her anguish immediately vanishes. May she Radhika bestow upon me the service of her own lotus feet. It is very difficult for Parvati Devi and other exalted goddesses to attain even a glimpse of Shrimati Radharani who is dear to Lord Shri Krishna. But if someone glorifies her by reciting these eight verses, then he who is delighted by Krishna's continuous association with, will grant the sweet nectar of her personal service to that person who thereby enters the assembly of her similarly delighted girlfriends. Hare Krishna, thank you Mataji.
Yeah, so this is the following truth, right? We will get the, we will get to Sir Shrimati Radharani who is eternally engaged in the service of Lord Shri Krishna. May she Radhika bestow upon us the service of her own lotus feet. Shrimati Radharani Ki Jai, Jai Jai Sri Radhe Shyam, Jai 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 Shri Vrindavan. Okay, wonderful. So next, let us go on to the study of Bhagavad Gita. So we will, we will start with the introduction to the Bhagavad Gita. I think the other day we were, we studied setting the scene and then we also studied the preface, alright? So today, let's, today being auspicious day of Ekadashi and we are just venturing into the Kartik month. Let us start from introduction because introduction is the starting of the prayers, the Mangalachuran prayers actually and the meaning of that. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare, Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, 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 Hare, Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare, Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, 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 Hare, Hare. So in the introduction, we studied all of the initial prayers that we offer during our, you know, when we offer, when we invoke auspiciousness before starting any activity. And then we had to start from Bhagavad Gita is also known as Gita Opni Shad, right? So first and foremost, we offered respects to our gurus, opened our eyes from the darkest ignorance. And we offered obeisances to Sri Shladopa Goswami who understood the heart of Chaitanya Mahaprabhu. And then we offered obeisances to the Shad Goswamis of Vrindavan. And then we offered obeisances to Krishna who is the Karuna Sindhu, who is the ocean of mercy. And then we offered obeisances to Shrimati Radharani, Taptakanchana Gaurangi, right? Who is the queen of Vrindavan, Radha Vrindavi, Vrindavanishwari. And then we offered obeisances to all the Vaishnava devotees of the Lord who are just like desire trees who can fulfill the desires of everyone and a full of compassion towards the fallen conditioned souls, right? We offered obeisances to all the assembled devotees and then we chanted our Panchatattva mantra and then the Hare Krishna Mahamantra. So in that way, our Mangalachuran prayers got over and then we are today going to continue with the introduction where we stopped last time by concluding with the Mangalachuran prayers, right? So I just thought we'll just revise it now invoking auspiciousness as we... As we proceed with the study of introduction on the auspicious occasion of Pashankusha Ekadashi today. Alright, so let us go ahead, devotees can raise your hands and then we can continue with the study of the introduction. Okay. Yeah, so let's start from here. Bhagavad Gita is also known as Gita Opni Shad. Okay Rajinis Prabhu, please go ahead.
Hare Krishna Mataji, Dandadpranams.
Hare Krishna, Dandadpranams, yes.
Bhagavad Gita is also known as Gita Opni Shad. It is the essence of Vedic knowledge and one of the most important opnits in Vedic literature. Of course, there are many commentaries in English on Bhagavad Gita. And one may question the necessity of another one. This present edition can be explained in the following way. Recently, an American lady asked me to recommend an English translation of Bhagavad Gita. Of course, in America, there are so many editions of Bhagavad Gita available in English. But as far as I have seen, not only in America but also in India, none of them can be strictly said to be authoritative. Because in almost every one of them, the commentator has expressed his own opinions without touching the spirit of Bhagavad Gita as it is. The spirit of Bhagavad Gita is mentioned in Bhagavad Gita itself. It is just, it is just like this. If we want to take a particular medicine, then if we want to take a personal medicine, then we have to follow the directions written on the label. We cannot take the medicine according to our own with or direction of a friend. It must be taken according to the directions on the label or the directions given by the physician. Similarly, Bhagavad Gita should be taken or accepted as it is directed by the speaker itself. The speaker of the Bhagavad Gita is Lord Shri Krishna. He is mentioned on every page of Bhagavad Gita as the supreme personality of Godhead Bhagwan. Of course, the word Bhagwan sometimes refer to any powerful person or any powerful demigod. And certainly here Bhagwan designates Lord Shri Krishna as a great personality. But at the same time, we should know the, we should know that Lord Shri Krishna is the supreme personality of Godhead as is confirmed by all great Atya. Means spiritual master, like Shankarajarya, Ramanuja Jarya, Madhavacharya, Nimba.
Hare Krishna.
Adalp also establishes himself as the supreme personality of Godhead in Bhagavad Gita and he is accepted as such in the Ram Sahitha and all other Puranas, especially the Shrimad Bhagavatam. Known as Bhagavat Puran, Krishna to Bhagwan. Therefore, we should take Bhagavad Gita as it is directed by the personality of Godhead himself in the fourth chapter of Gita, four point one two three, the Lord says.
Imam vivasvate yogam.
Imam vivasvate yogam, rokta, rokta vannaham, avay, avayayam. Vivasya, vivasvan, vivasvan manave prabha, prabha. Manu, manur, istu, it, it.
No, you want it not coming clear, Prabhu, okay, let me read it. Imam vivasvate yogam, proktavanaham avyayam, vivasvan manave praha, manur ikshwaka ve bravet. Evam paramparaapraptham, imam rajarsayoviduhu, sakali nehamhatah, yogonasthaha parantapa. Saevayam mayate dyaa, yogaprokthapurathanaha, bhakto simesakhacheti, rahasyam hi etaduttamam. Yes, Prabhu, try reading, here the Lord informs.
Here the Lord informs Arjuna that this system of yoga, the Bhagavad Gita, was first spoken to the sun god. And the sun god explained it to Manu and Manu explained it to Ikshwaku. And in this way, in that way, by dysphoric succession, one speaker after another, this yoga system has been coming down. But in the course of time, it has become lost. Consequently, the Lord has to speak it again, this time to Arjuna on the battlefield of Kurukshetra.
Okay, Hare Krishna. Okay, let's try to discuss this, this is very, very wonderful. You know, Prabhupada himself mentions here and in several places Prabhupada mentions Bhagavan means only Krishna, right? There can be several controllers, there can be several, several people holding positions, right? Different positions, different hierarchy is there, there is one only supreme personality of Godhead. But there are several other controllers below the supreme controller, even you and I are mini, mini controllers, right? We control what dress we want to wear, what do we want to cook, whether I want to observe Ekadashi or not, whether I want to observe Chaturma's fasting or not, we are all little controllers where we can control our own within the gambit of our body. We can, we can have, we can exercise a little bit of control, right? I want to wake up at this time, I want to take bath at this time, I want to eat this, I don't want to eat this. Yes, we are all controllers, but Prabhupada is saying there is only one supreme controller. And that supreme controller is, is the cause of all causes, Ishvara Paramakrishna Sachita Nanda Vikrha. Anadir, Adir Govinda, his name is Govinda, he is an Adir, he does not have any source. Adir, he is the source of all, that means all the Vishnu avatars are also coming from Krishna only because Krishna is the supreme personality of Godhead, he does not have any source, right? There is also this beautiful analogy that is given by Prabhupada in the purport of Shrimad Bhagavatam. Prabhupada says, ete chamsukala pumsa krishnastu Bhagavan swayam, right? Which also Prabhupada quotes here, that means there are several candles which are lit by that one candle, right? And that one candle also burns brightly and also the other candles also burning brightly, right? It is not that, it is not that, you know, the other candles are not burning brightly or this candle is more bright than the other, no, right? That is why they say there is no difference between Krishna and the Vishnu avatars, right? Why? Because Prabhupada explains how Krishna is Vishnu at home and Vishnu is Krishna in the office, right? When, when, you know, say a husband and wife relationship or a mother and daughter relationship or, or a father and son relationship, right? Say for example, a father or mother is working, right? When, when a son or a daughter needs to meet the mother or the father in the office, will they go and hug the mother? You know, sit in the mother's lap and talk, talk loudly with each other and get excited, you know? And, you know, talk, talk to each other in loud voice and all with excitement, no. They will try to control themselves, they will try to talk in a, you know, very respectful way, talk only what is necessary. You know, finish their business and then go home. They will wait for the father or the mother to come home when they can have detailed talk. When, because the, because the atmosphere is informal, right? The same father or the mother, when they come home, you know, they are so enthusiastic. It's not that they don't derive pleasure when they see their children in the office. But the surrounding is such that there is a work environment, so we just have to finish our business. What is it that the daughter or the son wants, finish their business and then get back to work. But in the evening, you know, the mother and the father, right, whoever it is, will be waiting to meet their children in the evening so that they can spend time with them, right? Also, a mother's relationship with the, with the daughter or son is not just transactional, okay, what do you want? Okay, I give you what you want and then we finish, no. Right? We are waiting for those moments where we can spend time with each other, you know, exchange loving reciprocations with each other. So more of these loving reciprocations are exhibited in the form of Krishna, right? Because even in the Vishnu forms, Vishnu has so many responsibilities, right? You know, the Karanthika Shiva Vishnu is sleeping on the, is sleeping on the ocean and then from his body, you know, pores are coming out, each, each one of those bubbles coming out of the pores is becoming a universe. And then he expands himself into Garbhadiksha Vishnu, he goes and, you know, he is doing his shyam there in the Garbha ocean. And then from his navel, this Brahma is coming out and then Brahma has to be taught what he should do, he doesn't know what to do, right? And then Brahma is hearing tapa, 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 Brahma does his tapasya. And then Garbhadiksha Vishnu has to teach Brahma what he's supposed to do, okay, I am being born to perform secondary creation. And Shriratiksha Vishnu is present in everybody's heart and then he is like, you know, Upadhrishtan, Umanthach, Bhartha, Bhugta, Maheshwara. He is a witness, he is a permitter, right? Although he is not very involved, but yet he is situated in everyone's hearts, not a work, right? But there is only one Lord who is happily playing on a flute, happily loitering around with his, with his Gopa friends and happily doing whatever he wants, he has no duty to perform, right? So it is said, Prabhupada explains in an analogy that the chief executive officer of the company does not come to the company. However, everything in the company operates under his, under his supervision, right? Whether direct or indirect, whatever he says only can do, right? Even if the managing director has a different opinion, either he has to convince the CEO that this is a better way or he has to simply follow the, the CEO because he is a chief executive officer, right? Like that Krishna is the chief controller, the chief enjoyer and the chief owner of everything, right? The managing directors may be the Vishnu avatars, right? The Garbhadiksha Vishnu, the Kshriratiksha Vishnu, the Karanthika Shiva Vishnu are all in charge of various departments, right? But you know, the managing, there could be a managing director for purchases, managing director for sales and below the managing director, there are purchase department head, there is a sales department head. So like that below the Vishnu's you have the various demigods, they assist in those various capacities too, to get those things which are required by Lord Vishnu, even Lord Vishnu is very powerful. By his mere glance, he can on, on Ramadevi, he actually creates a Mahatathva and that glance itself is Lord Shiva, right? So in that way, Lord Vishnu is equally powerful as Lord Shri Krishna. But Lord Vishnu, it's not as sweet as Lord Krishna, there are only four things, Madhurya, that Krishna has, which even Lord Vishnu does not have, but in terms of power, in terms of killing the demons, in fact, Krishna appears in his four-handed form only when he has to kill demons. Even if, even he had to actually help protect Padikshit Maharaj, he went into the womb of Mother Utara in his Shank, with his Shankachakra Gada Padma, right? Although he was in a small baby form, he was, he was having Shankachakra Gada Padma, Krishna does not like to kill demons, right? For him, for that his energies, multifarious energies are there. Krishna in his original Krishna of Vrindavan, he simply wants to exchange loving reciprocation with his devotees in the various rasa's and all the devotees, whatever rasa they may be in, whether it is Dasya, Savya, Vatsalya or Madhurya rasa, they all find it so blissful, nobody is anchoring, oh, why am I not in that rasa? Why? Because Krishna reciprocates with everybody in that way that that person feels that I am the most special, right? So in this way Krishna is the only Ishvara, everyone else is a Britya, everyone else is a servant of the supreme lord, appointed by the lord to perform certain duties, right? And then Arjuna also tells Krishna very nicely here, it is not only that Krishna himself calls himself Krishna, I am the supreme lord. Anybody can do that, isn't it? That is why Prabhupada told, if anybody comes and tells you that you are that I am the supreme lord, ask him to lift the Gauran hell, right? Even if you can use both hands, it's okay, like that some Prabhupada says in one lecture. But how did Krishna lift it? It's not like, you know, Krishna had, had actually so much of power, you know, I was remembering. You know, her grace, I think Jaduranimathaja or somebody, you know, who paints all those beautiful pictures that we have in Krishna book. Initial stages, they painted Krishna as like, you know, with a lot of muscles. You know, if Krishna has to be the mentor of the whole world, he has to be really strong, he has to be like a wrestler with a lot of muscles and all. But Prabhupada said, no, Krishna is Ayuswarya Saya, Samagri Saya, Veerya Saya, Yasushashriya. Yaana veiraagya yashiva sannambhagai tingana, Krishna is very, very handsome. Krishna looks like a sixteen-year-old boy eternally, even when he is in the battlefield of Kurukshetra. So in that way, Prabhupada told that we have to draw Krishna as if he is Navayogvanam, he has eternal youth, right? Even if he is hundred and twenty-five years old, he has two hundred years old, does not matter, but he is still like a Navayogvanam. And, and you know, in this particular verse, Krishna himself, Arjuna tells Krishna, Krishna, not only are you telling me that you are the supreme lord, but also the various sejas and rishis are also saying, ahustvaam rishis sarve, deva rishi naradstata, asito devalo vyasa swayamcheva bravi sheme. Swayamcheva bravi sheme, whatever you are telling me, I have already heard it from Asito, Devalo, Vyaso, Narada and all the rishis. So we rely on Guru, Shastra and Sadhu, right? Then we are making decision who is the lord, who is not the lord and we also have, you know, Krishna showing us, you know, the Vishnu perform, right? When he showed the Vishnu perform, so many demigods and demons were gushing out of the mouths, you know, so many hands and so many tongues and so many ears and all of that, so Prabhupada said, don't get duped, just by some, making some powder, just by giving some coins, nobody can become the supreme personality of Godhead. But if anyone claims to be the lord, then you refer to Guru, Shastra and Sadhu, right? The prediction of when the lord will appear, there the lord will appear, who will be the lord's associates? They are all given in the shastras and how do we understand the shastras? That is where Prabhupada is quoting here in the introduction, four point one two three. Imam vivasvate yogam proktavanaham avyayam, vivasvan manave praha, manur ikshwaka ve bravet. The supreme person, the supreme truth or the absolute knowledge cannot be given by anybody other than the supreme personality of Godhead. When the lord gives this, this supreme knowledge through the, through the bona fide discipleship succession, right? There are four bona fide discipleship successions and the lord may choose two, the lord gives in all the four discipleship successions. And anyone can choose which path, which is most, which they find most attractive, right? There is all the, all the philosophies tell that Krishna is the supreme lord, I am the servant of the lord, my duty is to serve the lord, right? So in this way, the tatwa only varies, right? There is, you know, what do you call, in Dwaita, like yesterday we were celebrating Badwacharya's appearance day, right? Madwacharya actually brought about the concept of Dwaitavad. Dwaitavad means Krishna is the supreme lord, I am the servant of the supreme lord. And all of the four bona fide parampras are teaching us the same thing. But the advantage of being in Brahman Madhva Gaudiya Vaishnava Parampra is that Chaitanya Mahaprabhu himself took this parampra and he took two, two essential principles from all the other three bona fide parampras. And since the supreme lord himself chose to be in Brahman Madhva Gaudiya Vaishnava Guru Parampra and this parampra also has Madhivendra Puri who introduced the concept of Madhurya, the loving reciprocation with the lord that is done in the Paraki Abhava, right? So that was also introduced by Madhivendra Puri in Brahman Madhva Gaudiya Vaishnava Guru Parampra. So when we are hearing from the bona fide acharyas, right? Prabhupada himself wrote from the commentaries of Vishnachakratitaakur, Baladevidyabushan, they are all acharyas in our Brahman Madhva Gaudiya Vaishnava Guru Parampra. So when we hear through those sources, evam paramparaapraptham, right? It comes from one person to another coming in the bona fide discipleship succession. When we are hearing from a bona fide acharya who is coming in this discipleship succession, then rahasyam hi etaduttamam, this rahasyam or this guiyangyan or this confidential knowledge can be understood as it is, right? And Krishna himself says, why am I telling you again, Arjuna, right? I have already told this to all the four, you know, Sambraga, Sambragaya acharyas, like Brahma, Rudra, Sanat Kumaras as well as Lakshmi Devi, so why am I telling it to you again, right? Sakali nehamhatah yogonasthaha parantapa, right? So Krishna is telling Arjuna that with the passage of time, this knowledge seems to have deteriorated and has got lost, right? So in this way, I am giving, giving you this knowledge again for your benefit, like that he is saying, right? So two, three very important things, one, the supreme absolute truth or the knowledge about the supreme absolute truth cannot be given by anybody other than the supreme lord himself. The lord has given the knowledge but due to the passage of time, that means what in Kali yoga, Kali yoga, they are all subject to the influence of time, right? So in this way, when the knowledge deteriorates or when people are not practicing it, as per the, as per the, as what is specified, then the lord incarnates again and again to re-deliver this knowledge because the lord wants us to go back home back to Godhead. The lord is so merciful that the lord wants us to go back home back to Godhead. But we want to toil in this material world, we want to break the, you know, we break the stones. Like, you know, some people enjoy being in the prison, right? Because they get their food very easily, don't have to work, they just have to some, break some stones as it is told by the, you know, the jail warden and they live happily because, you know, and, you know, just eating and then sleeping and then doing the work that is allotted, you know, no anxiety, right? But is that real bliss? No, you know, the anxiety is, you know, they may be, they may be, they may be, you know, their term of punishment may increase, right? Because if they just told what they are supposed to do, but they, they don't know the secret of getting out of the prison. You know, they will be toiling their, their entire life there, thinking that they are enjoying, but actually they are wasting the human form of life. Similarly, in this material world, right, Janma Ayuswarya Shrutha Shribair, right? What is that? Madapuman, right? What is that? You know, false ego gets increased, just because if you are born in a, you know, Janma Ayuswarya, if you are born in a high parentage family, if you have a lot of wealth, if you have a lot of beauty, if you have a lot of skills, if you have a lot of, a lot of talents and what happens, we, we think we are proud, oh, I am the possessor of all of these things, I can get so many things done like that. So these kind of things actually increase the false ego, hence it is better, right? And Krishna knows whom to give, whom not to give, that's why Krishna says whatever desires you have, whatever desires, you know, even if you have, you know, what do you call liberation as a desire, you pray only to me, right? If it is, if it is good for you, I will give you, otherwise I will not give you, right? To understand this, right, how it works, we need to understand this bona fide truth, this absolute knowledge about the supreme absolute truth through the bona fide Guru Parampra, only then when we will be able to understand these rasa's, how is the lord dancing? You know, how is this little boy who is taking the juta from Madhumangal the lord, right? How do we understand this? We can understand this only when we hear from bona fide acharyas, what are the various rasa's with the lord? What are the pastimes of the lord, how the pastimes of the lord are not to be imitated? How the pastimes of the lord tell us how great the lord is and how we should follow the instructions of the lord? So all of this we will understand in its entirety when we hear from a devotee who is coming in the bona fide Guru Vaishnava Parampra or sorry Guru Sishya Parampra, right? So that's what it is, so let's continue reading here where Krishna explains, evam paramparaapraptham, imam rajarsayoviduhu, sakali nehamhatah yogonasthaha parantapa. Okay, so who is reading? Okay, Anusha Madhaji, go ahead. Then Mansi Madhaji, then Subangi Keswim Madhaji can read, yes, go ahead.
Hare Krishna, Madhaji, Dandadpranam.
Shilpa Prabhupada. Twenty-six, sir, okay, okay, go ahead, Madhaji.
Sure, the lord informs Arjuna that this system of yoga, the Bhagavad Gita, was first spoken to the sun god and the sun god explained it to Manu and Manu explained it to Ikshwaku. And in that way, by discipleship succession, one speaker after another, this yoga system has been coming down. But in the course of time, it has become lost. Consequently, lord has to speak it again, this time to Arjuna on the battlefield of Kurukshetra. He tells Arjuna that he is relating this supreme secret to him, to him because Arjuna is his devotee and his friend. The purpose of this is that Bhagavad Gita.
Hare Krishna, Madhaji, from here we will do in the next, because we just completed here, why it is important to hear in the bona fide parampra? Now why Arjuna? Now, why Arjuna is the chosen recipient? That is what we will start from our next Ekadashi. We will start, why Krishna chose Arjuna to be the recipient of this Bhagavat Gita knowledge? Okay, so now, uh, let's quickly, uh, go on to taking into interest, uh, you know, the time. Uh, what we will do now is quickly we will go to the two verses that we want to memorize. Uh, in the, in the Bhagavat Gita today, we are going to study the first two verses. So in this way, in one, one year, we will be, um, trying to complete maximum verses of the Bhagavat Gita. We will try to complete the hundred and eight verses of the Bhagavat Gita as much as possible, uh, in this year, right? Uh, so, uh, every Ekadashi only we are reading Bhagavat Gita now. So we will do, we will try to do two verses every Ekadashi and we will contemplate on those two verses. And then we will also, when we start Bhagavatam, we will also have one verse of Bhagavatam. So every, uh, actually one verse a week, that's why, that's why we can say, one verse of Bhagavatam, one verse of Bhagavat Gita every week. So when we memorize it, we internalize it, we read the purport and then we see how we can apply it in our life. And that will be the, that will be the success of our life. All right. So let me quickly open, uh, the hundred and eight important verses. Today we will do the first two of them. Uh, Anusha Mathiji, you can continue, uh, reading, uh, the words and the translation. So let me quickly open this. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, uh, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna. So today, uh, we will do, uh, verse number one and two. These are the hundred and eight important slogans, uh, oft repeated by Shilpa Prabhupada in his lectures. So the first verse is one point one. Yes, Mathiji, go ahead.
Hare Krishna Mathiji, Anusha Madam. Dritarashtra said, oh Sanjay, after assembling in the place of pilgrimage at Kurukshetra. What did my sons and the sons of Pandu do being desirous to fight?
So, um, so it is explained by the Acharyas that, uh, Dritarashtra also heard the same thing from Sanjay. What Arjuna was speaking, I mean, what Krishna was speaking to Arjuna. So how come, uh, whatever realizations Arjuna got, what did Arjuna say? Whatever you are saying, oh Krishna, I will follow your instructions. But even at the end of hearing entire same conversation that was repeated to him, uh, by our Sanjayah. Our Dritarashtra, he is asking this question, Kema Kurvata Sanjayah? What did they do after assembling at the battlefield of Kurukshetra, the Dharmakshetra? Why? Because he was so much, um, so much covered up with I, me, mine. Right? Aham, ami, thee, this is mine. So what is in it for me? He only wanted to know. Yeah, is, is in any way, uh, you know, the Pandavas are not going to, are going to withdraw from the battle. Because if they do withdraw from the battle, they are the entitled, they are the persons who are entitled. Because, uh, they have already done their thirteen years of, uh, thirteen, the exile as well as agyanavas in their back. And they now they deserve the kingdom, right? But then what happened, uh, because of this war, you know, because Krishna went and then they were not, they were not giving the due share. The war has happened now, but still because it is a place of pilgrimage and Dritarashtra knows that my sons are Adharmic. So if they fight in this, in this battlefield which is Dharma, Dharmic personified, Kurukshetra. Then, uh, maybe my sons will lose because this is a place where Dharma will win, right? Because Dritarashtra had a lot of knowledge, right? But he was so much attached to his son Duryodhana and he wanted to ensure that what he could not get, at least his son, son should get. Right? I could not become the king, but my son should become the king. So he was willing to, willing to do anything and that is why he is saying, my sons and the sons of Pandu. Actually, uh, Pandu is no more, so I, I call it, uh, this Dritarashtra. He is supposed to have the same, uh, paternal affection for the Pandavas also because they are also under his care. So what is he saying? Come, uh, you know, um. Right? What did my sons and the sons of Pandu do? Very clearly is alienated the Pandavas. Okay, what did, what did his sons do, right? So, uh, what is the, what is the mood or the consciousness with which we need to study Bhagavat Gita? Right? The consciousness should be like that of Arjuna. Arjuna is clearly, you know, Sishya, Stya, Ham, Shadi, Mam, Tom, Prapanam, I cannot understand, I do not know what to do. Oh Krishna, I am your surrendered disciple, please tell me what am I, what am I supposed to do? Right? Uh, and then, um, and then the next verse also two point seven, uh, he is going to say, right? Uh, I am confused about my duty, I do not know what is best for me, I am surrendering unto you, please guide me. So if this is the attitude in which we study Bhagavat Gita from a bona fide person who is coming in the bona fide Parampara. Then we will live to understand Bhagavat Gita as it is, otherwise we will be as confused if not more. If we hear it in the Dritarashtra consciousness, what can I do? How will it help me? What will I gain? Uh, all of that, then we will be as confused as ever, yeah? Uh, okay, Mansi Mathiji, you can please read. Yes, Mathiji.
Now I am confused about my duty and have lost all composure because of miserly weakness. In this condition, I am asking you to tell me for certain what is best for me. Now, I am your disciple and a soul surrendered unto you, please instruct me.
Hare Krishna, thank you, Mathiji. So I am a soul surrendered unto you, I am confused, we are all confused in this material life, right? Every day is a battle and we are confused what to do, what not to do, what is right for, for me, what will give me the best results? You are so much filled with anxiety because it's uncertain, you do not know what is going to happen at what point in time. Every minute, every second, uh, is a vipadam, is an, is an opportunity for some danger to follow us. That's why we are always worried, we are always in anxiety. So what are we supposed to do? Just like Arjuna surrendered to his spiritual master, we also need to surrender to our guru. Who is coming in a bona fide Guru Parampara and ask, what am I supposed to do? I am so confused, I do not know what to do, I do not know what to, what to speak, what action to take, what am I supposed to do? So in that way, when we do, uh, then automatically, all our confusion will get cleared. All right. Uh, then, uh, now, I just, I, I wanted to start with Damodar Ashtrikam also, sing that bhajan today. As we are welcoming the month of Shrimati Radharani and this is the, the lela where, you know, with the help of Radharani, Yashadamaya binds Krishna. So we will do that, but, um, should we do the japa first or should we sing first? Okay, let's do the japa first and then, uh, as part of the kirtan, we will sing, uh, um, uh, Damodar Ashtrikam, no. Uh, yeah, let's do the japa first and then as part of, uh, the kirtan, we let's do, let's sing Damodar Ashtrikam and then we will conclude with. Uh, Panchitattu Mantra and Hare Krishna Ha Mantra. All right. So, uh, I will request all the devotees, there are sixteen devotees who managed to still stay back. We are already exceeding the time, we already exceeded one thirty P M. So thank you very much, uh, so sorry for this. Uh, we will do seven minutes japa and then we will sing eight minutes, um, uh, what do you call, Damodar Ashtrikam and then end with Hare Krishna Ha Mantra. So by two P M we will end our session today, please forgive me, uh, we are going overboard as always. Uh, thank you. So let's quickly chant with Shilpa Prabhupada, we all, all of us will remain muted, but we will sit in a proper prayerful mood. We will sit in a proper posture and we will pronounce the Hare Krishna Ha Mantra in such a way that we can hear our own mantra. Right? All of us will be muted, but we can hear our own mantra and Prabhupada will be chanting. All right. So in that way, we will do, um, one round with Shilpa Prabhupada.
Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare Hare
Sri Krishna Chaitanya Prabhu Nikyananda Surya Dayitam Radha Shiva Sadhi Gauravakula
Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare Hare
Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna 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 Hare Hare Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna 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 Hare Hare Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare Hare Krishna Krishna Hare Hare Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna 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 Hare Hare Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna 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 Hare Hare Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare Hare Sri Hari Naam Prabhu Ki Jaye Kalikupitavahana Hare Krishna Mahamantra Ki Jaye Samveer Gaurabhaktavindiki Jaye All Glories Assembly Devotees Hare Krishna All Glories Assembly Devotees Hare Krishna All Glories Assembly Devotees Hare Krishna All Glories All Glories All Glories To Shri Sri Guru and Sri Gauranga Shilpa Prabhupada Shilpa Gurudeva Ki Jaye Hare Krishna, so thank you very much dear devotees for doing one round, now quickly let's sing this most beautiful song, um, Damodar Ashatukam. Uh, this is the month, uh, that the one full month of hearing this Radha Damodar pastimes, uh, how Mother Yashada binds, um, Lord Sri Krishna and how she runs behind, um, Krishna, although she is very tired, although she is perspiring, she is, uh, uh, you know, she is angry yet, yet, you know, she is not, she is not giving up, right? She is not giving up, uh, running behind Krishna because her desire to bind Krishna is so much, um, that, uh, you know, she wants to bind Krishna in her heart, actually. That's what we all devotees want to aspire, we want to capture Lord Sri Krishna in the Karagraha of our hearts, right? The Bilva Mangal Takur sings, um, Karagraha, like he says, our, our heart is like a prison, which is very dark, which is full of ignorance, yet, uh, we want to, um, uh, we want to, uh, we want to capture Lord Sri Krishna in our heart, so we have to make our heart as soft as butter, so Krishna comes and steals. So I have, and just let me open the Damodar Ashatukam. Um, Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram Ram Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram Ram Hare Hare Actually, uh, this, uh, this PPT, uh, was actually prepared by, uh, uh, Radhisam Prabhu, right? Radhisam Prabhu only wanted the translations to be included, the verses were there, so I only updated the translation and sent it to Prabhu. And I asked Prabhu, Prabhu, can I use it for our Damodar Ashatukam entire month? Yeah, of course he said, you know, it is only for the devotees that we are preparing, so I am just sharing this. Uh, this is prepared by, the pictures and everything that are put here, uh, have been prepared by, uh, His Grace Radhisam Prabhu. So I only added the translations here. So let us use this PPT and we will sing, let us observe ourselves in this, uh, in this wonderful song, uh, which is called, uh, Sri Damodar Ashatukam. One second. Hare Krishna. Okay, let me share my screen. Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare Hare Sri Damodar Ashatukam Ki Jaye Satyavritamuni Ki Jaye
Namamishvaram Shachita Ananda Rupa Lasat Kunda Lam Go Kule Braja Maana Yasodha Bhi Olu Kaladha Vamaana Aram Rishtha Matyanta To Dru Tago Pya Namamishvaram Shachita Ananda Rupa Lasat Kunda Lam Go Kule Braja Maana Yasodha Bhi Olu Kaladha Vamaana Aram Rishtha Matyanta To Dru Tago Pya Yasodha Bhi Olu Kaladha Vamaana Aram Rishtha Matyanta To Dru Tago Pya Rudantam Hor Netra Yukmam Vajantam Karam Boja Yukmena Saatankanitra Ohoh Shvasakampa Tri Nikamka Ghanta Vidagrayvam Damodaram Bhaktibhadam Ohoh Shvasakampa Tri Nikamka Ghanta Vidagrayvam Damodaram Bhaktibhadam Vitidrikshvalila Vi Mananda Kunde Pagoshamni Majanta Mahakyapayantam Vitidrikshvalila Vi Mananda Kunde Pagoshamni Majanta Mahakyapayantam Adi Shitake Shubhaktarjitavam Unha Prema Tastam Chaathavati Bande Adi Shitake Shubhaktarjitavam Unha Prema Tastam Chaathavati Bande Paramdeva Mohksha Mohkshava Dhimva Nachanyambhne Ham Varishadapiyav Paramdeva Mohksha Mohkshava Dhimva Nachanyambhne Ham Varishadapiyav Niramdeva Purnata Gopala Valam Adame Manasya Virastam Thimangali Niramdeva Purnata Gopala Valam Adame Manasya Virastam Thimangali Vidamdeva Mokambo Jamhatyanta Neelai Vedam Kuntalaisne Gharakkeishagopya Vidamdeva Mokambo Jamhatyanta Neelai Vedam Kuntalaisne Gharakkeishagopya Ohoh Shambida Bimbadatta Garamhe Manasya Virastam Malam Lakshulavay Ohoh Shambida Bimbadatta Garamhe Manasya Virastam Malam Lakshulavay Amo Deva Damodara Ananta Vishnu Prasidaprabho Dukkalalapimagnam Amo Deva Damodara Ananta Vishnu Prasidaprabho Dukkalalapimagnam Ipa Dristi Dristi Adhini Nam Badano Iha Nejamamagnam Vedya Chitrisa Ipa Dristi Dristi Adhini Nam Badano Iha Nejamamagnam Vedya Chitrisa Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare Hare Gue Ratajau Bada Morkewa Yadva Hayamo Chitau Baki Phajo Kritaucha Gue Ratajau Bada Morkewa Yadva Hayamo Chitau Baki Phajo Kritaucha Ata Prima Bhakti Swakha Me Prayatya Namukse Grahoome Sti Damodar Deha Ata Prima Tim Swakha Me Prayatya Namukse Grahoome Sti Damodar Deha Ata Prima Bhakti Swakha Me Prayatya Namukse Grahoome Sti Damodar Deha Amastri Stu Damne Su Gadi Piri Damne Vadi Yoda Raaya Da Vishvasya Damne Amastri Stu Damne Su Gadi Piri Damne Vadi Yoda Raaya Da Vishvasya Damne Amo Radhikaaya Vitvadiya Priyaare Amo Ananta Neela Yo Devaya Dugyam Amo Radhikaaya Vitvadiya Priyaare Amo Ananta Neela Yo Devaya Dugyam Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare Hare Tayo Radha Madha Tayo Radha Madha 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 Radha Radha Sabhi Hari Hare Nayayashoda Damodara Yasodha Damodara Damodara Nayayaprabhuva Prabhuva Gurudev Jaye Jaye Gurudev Nikai Gaurahari Bol Gaurahari Bol Gaurahari Bol Nikai Gaurahari Bol
Sri Damodar Ashatukam Ki Jaye Jagat Gurus Sila Prabhupada Sila Gurudev Ki Jaye Nantakoti Vaishnavavindiki Jaye Nitaai Gaurapremanande Hare Hare Bol Hare Krishna, so fifteen devotees managed to stay till after two o'clock also, so I am very much grateful to all of you, please forgive me. Somehow my sessions never end on time, please forgive me, uh, and, um, we'll meet tomorrow morning, five o'clock for our Brahmanmutha chanting session. Until then, I hope all of you have given your sankalpa for extra rounds chanting, please chant extra rounds, we'll be, uh, we'll be reporting it to our gurus. By their blessings only we can chant Hare Krishna, by their blessings only we can practice devotional service and we're doing it only for their pleasure. If they are pleased, our life is set, right? Going back home, back to Godhead is set, we simply have to follow instructions of our gurus and we have to please them, that's all, very simple task, no, uh, no shades of gray. Right? Otherwise, when there are shades of gray, we don't know, I should do this or I should do that, I should do this, right? So when they ask our senior authorities, they will tell us do this, do that, we simply have to follow their instructions and when we do that, automatically all the problems are resolved, right? So thank you very much, dear devotees. Pancharalpatru Bhaschakrapasindu Bhavicha Patitana Pavane Bhiyo Vaishnavebhiyo Namum Namaha. Nantakoti Vaishnavavindiki Jaye, so please, if you've not yet given your sankalpa, please do so, um, as soon as possible. And, uh, please report your completion of the sankalpa or you are exceeding the sankalpa by tomorrow morning, seven o'clock. And then we'll close the group and then we'll report, uh, all of your wonderful chanting sessions, so let me quickly see. Shubhangi Keshi Madhaji is there, Shoba Madhaji is there, Harjeet Madhaji and her little son, Namish Prabhu is there. Naam Acharya Shilpa Hariraasakuru Ki Jaye Hari Naam Prabhu Ki Jaye Sarogavishri Madhaji, uh, Anusha Madhaji and, uh, I don't remember. And her little son, uh, very transcendental son, very mischievous son, like Damodar, right? So we want to follow instructions of Damodar, alright. Uh, Sindhu Madhaji, um, Shridhar Prabhu, Ilandini Madhaji, uh, Karpagavali Madhaji, Rajneesh Prabhu, Kripa Madhaji and all the other devotees who are not switching on their cameras also. Thank you very, very much for joining in and giving us your association on the most auspicious occasion of Ekadashi. Now we will continue our chanting, Hare Krishna, maximum number of rounds, maximum mercy. So we all had this transcendental competition, who is doing maximum rounds? Maximum rounds, whoever does the maximum rounds will get the maximum mercy of Shrimati Radharani as you're approaching the Kartik month. So let's have this competition and let's get back to chanting, happy chanting, Hare Krishna Shilpa Prabhupada Shilpa Gurudev Ki Jaye Nitaai Gaurapremanande Hadi Hare Bol. Thank you very much, dear devotees, and with pranams to all of you.